Good evening. We recognize that the Hogan Administrative Center occupies the land of the Ho-Chunk people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho-Chunk land and the sacred lands of all indigenous peoples. Will the secretary please call a roll?
Ms. Bellman?
Excuse?
Thank you. Ms. Burkertal? Dr. Cooperstol? Dr. Garcia? Dr. Jimenez?
Excuse?
Ms. Leahy? Ms. Moots? Mr. Corburg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Here.
We now will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board. I would entertain at this time a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, a motion has been made by Dr. Cooperstol and seconded by Mr. Spivey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Moving along, for public speakers tonight, it's the policy of the Board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the Board. Comments about individual staff personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the Board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this is the same policy, limits your time to speak to five minutes, and this limit will be strictly enforced, and may ask the superintendent to keep track of the time and to notify the speaker when the time is running out.
I will.
You are also asked to give your name and the district of the school where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record. And our first speaker tonight is John Havlicek.
Hello, my name is John Havlicek. I live in the School District of La Crosse. You don't need my address anymore. Okay. So I'm here tonight in my 27th year of teaching to talk about the reality of a teacher's workload and the enormous lack of respect we are being shown when we talk about our workload. I'm not going to talk about the lack of input that we have in things that affect us daily. I'm not going to talk about the number of initiatives that are dumped on us without our input, with no time for us to work through everything that they entail. I'm not going to talk about things like coaching that is somehow going to make me a better teacher without any thought given to find out if I need coaching or in what areas. I'm going to talk about the mountainous level of disrespect that gives voice to the absurd notion that we are part-time employees, that our workload is somehow the equivalent of not even being a full-time employee. We were told last spring and summer that teachers in La Crosse are not full-time employees. Let me say that that will come as a shock to 600-plus teachers in our district. In fact, I would think that news would make the School District of La Crosse the envy of every district in the state. Our teachers don't even have to work full-time. What a great deal. We were told very clearly, as was this school board, that teachers only work 7.8 hours per day and we only work 189 days per year. Wonderful. If that's the case, then I'm here to ask you to do one of the following things for me and for any other teachers who come before you. Number one, option number one. I've been tracking my overtime hours this year. This is only my 27th year of evidently part-time work, and I've been unable to complete my responsibilities in those allotted hours. In fact, I've never been able to complete my duties as a part-time employee. So I filled out a labor report, and I've provided copies for you. I think my per diem rate would be fair. Curriculum rate is considerably lower than my regular wage. I've never heard of anyone working overtime for a lower rate. If you're willing to do that, my discussion here would be done. I submitted this to my immediate supervisor, the principal at Central High School, as I believe is the protocol. He denied the hours, so I'm submitting them here in the hopes that you will compensate me for my overtime. My hour is well in excess of 7.8 hours per day and my work outside of the 189-day calendar. Option number two, tell me what to stop doing. I post my grades in a timely manner. I respond to students and parents in a timely manner. I complete my paperwork in a timely manner, not weeks late. I recently got an email from Mr. St. Pierre about a training that I have to do. I actually did it today. I also have to work with our instructional coaches at Central. Our Skyward system doesn't seem to be working correctly, or it doesn't set up correctly, or something. Nobody seems quite certain. I'm revising my lessons pretty much daily since things are so unusual the last couple of years. I'm supposed to be working on standards-based grading, which entails quite a bit of simply thinking, collaborating, rewriting of curriculum, assessments, creating rubrics, et cetera. As I'm approaching almost 40 hours of overtime, please tell me which of those things I should simply not do. Totally above 40 hours of work in a month. Option number three, give me comp time so I can gain back those hours without having to report to work. At this rate, I'll be done sometime in early April. Or number four, admit that we are in fact full-time employees that deserve to be treated like the professionals we are, and that we should be compensated fairly. If a young teacher, say in their first three years, told me that they thought teachers only worked 7.8 hours per day and only worked 189 days per year, I expect that teacher would soon move into a different profession. That teacher simply didn't understand what it took to be an excellent teacher. I would suggest to that young teacher that perhaps he or she needs to do some more reflecting on what goes into high-quality instruction. If an adult out in our community told me that teachers were only worthy of part-time wages, I would suspect that that adult has little to no understanding of K-12 public education. I know you can't by your own rules answer me tonight, but I hope you can answer me soon, preferably by the time payroll is done for our next pay period. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to the superintendent's consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve item from the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Okay, a motion has been made by Dr. Cooperstol to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Garcia. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Moving on to the Board Consent Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Dr. Cooperstol has made a motion to approve the Board Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Burkertal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Next, matters that are reserved for Board action. We have more information about the 2022-23 proposed budget approval.
So Ms. Sprang had presented the budget last month, two weeks ago, I think, something like that. And it included the whole budget book, which is something that is presented over many months in order to provide a comprehensive overview of what goes into it. And tonight we have an opportunity to approve the budget. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Sprang for further context.
Okay, so really you're approving the preliminary budget, and that was what it was posted yesterday in the La Crosse Tribune as per statute 15 days before the budget hearing. So that is what the other document is here. So do we have any questions on that or the preliminary budget plan document that I presented last month?
Did you receive any public feedback from, after posting this in the La Crosse Tribune?
No. So that's for the purpose of notifying that the public can attend the public meeting on October, I believe, 14th, and so they can review that. I haven't received any phone calls in advance of that, so.
Any further questions?
I make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 proposed budget as presented.
A motion has been made by Dr. Cooperstol to approve the 2022-23 proposed budget as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made by Ms. Leahy. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. And the motion is accepted. Now, we will move for information. 7.01 results, monitor and report R3 involves citizenship.
So Dr. Lahaki is here to present on R3, and this is the compilation report of all of the elements of R3. As a reminder, this is a monitoring report that we monitor over a period of time at multiple meetings throughout the school year to break it up and try and make it more timely and relevant to when this information is received by the school district, which sometimes works out and sometimes does not. And so with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Lahaki.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. This is the greatest hits of R3 throughout the year. And one of the things maybe keep in mind is the middle of November. We'll come back with maybe some suggestions as far as what to change for indicators, but also keep in mind timelines. I may come back to you with an idea because these indicators are sometimes time-sensitive and they don't line up. So would it be better, would you rather have two results policies in a particular month that are more timely, or continue to spread them out knowing that there might be some gaps? So those are one of the questions you'll have to wrestle with with the proposal that I bring in the middle of November. So I just wanted to give that context as you're thinking through some of these reports and timelines is how it lines up. One of the perfect examples of that is actually Results Policy 3.1. When it was originally presented, not all the data was available. It was embargoed by the Department of Public Instruction. That embargo was released last Thursday, so I was able to put in the data for R3.1 that you have not had the chance to review. It does serendipitously align because we could look at it and then it could be an action item in October and keep with this R3 overall, rather than doing a separate board report in January. It's a little more timely to do it that way. So let's start with Results Policy 3.1, which is understand and exercise the rights and responsibilities of citizenship in our democratic society. One of the indicators, and the one that I didn't report on earlier, was the use of our Wisconsin Forward exam. There's a strand that permeates the three different grade levels that are assessed. Fourth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade are our social studies area. There's a strand called civic responsibility, and I believe aligns to what we're looking for over this results policy. First, let's look at the overall data, which is fourth, eighth, and 10th combined. Proficient Advanced, our students in the spring of 2022, is at 55.7%. That's been broken down by different reference groups aligned to that. If you take a, where I would point next is to the actual three-year trends. So if you look at our fourth grade data, you can see back in 2019, which is always an interesting data point to compare it back to because that was pre-pandemic. So we were at 56.1% proficient and advanced, too, which was about 1.8% above the state. And then you can see in 2022, we're at 62%, which is .6 above the state. And I point that out specifically because when it comes to standardized assessment, I believe it's more accurate to compare it to the state than the actual percentages. There's always going to be some variance in the test difficulty, but when you compare sample size of La Crosse compared to the rest of the state, I think that gives you a pretty good measure of things are at. So hypothetically, you could actually have a proficiency and advanced level go down, but if we're either closing the gap to the state or above the state, I would make the case that we are improving. So I just wanted to point out that aspect of it. So that's fourth grade. Eighth grade was a situation where we were at 49.1% in grade eight in 2019. Last year, we were at 48.6, and then this year, we jumped to 51. But you can see compared to the state, we did drop a little bit compared to our overall averages in eighth grade. Whereas in 10th grade, that was one of our strongest years for this particular strand. You can see the percentages jumped almost 8% back from 2019, and our closing the gap, we are almost at the state average. Oops, I was looking at four, eight, and 10. Let's see. Grade 10, we were at 44.3% in 2019 and jumped almost 10% in proficiency. And now our 10th graders were almost, what, 4.6% above the state average with that. So that was some nice growth compared to, in 2019, we were below the state average. So those are the indicator, or indicator one civic responsibility. The second one that I shared before has to do with voter registration. That particular one, we do have an update as well. We have an election coming up in November, and whenever it's a midterm election, we expect some sort of boost. We do have one of our teachers at Central, Todd Fergit, who's working with the Davis Brothers, who play basketball here. You'll see some billboards and some posters going out soon encouraging people to register to vote, and of course, vote. We hope that will make a difference, and I will report back on that data once we get the voter registration records with the county compared to our student enrollment. So that one we've looked at before. That's 3.1. Would it make sense to pause for questions after each one? Yes?
Sure. Any questions? Dr. Cooperstol?
Dr. Lahaki, can you say just a word about this measure for civic responsibility? Just a sample question or something about?
It talks about rights, responsibilities, relationships to the Constitution, the importance of voting. The questions, there's like a, what do I call it, a norming process occurs during the summer where they write some of the questions, and we do have new standards in social studies. This test actually reflects the new standards, so you might see some percentages change because we've changed the standards that are being assessed as well. So it is hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison to the past, but we're aware of what those changes are related to civic responsibility, and that's what we work with our curriculum on, to make sure our fourth graders, eighth graders, and 10th graders specifically are connected. So those are grade levels that we tackle US history more than others. That may change in the future. Fifth grade and fourth grade are flipping a little bit, where fifth grade is becoming more of the US history approach. So they'll still get it in elementary, but maybe not as strongly as they would currently, but it does align better with other elements of the curriculum.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think you may move on.
Results Policy 3.2, demonstrate effective skills in team as well as individual endeavors. For this particular one, we have two or more co-curricular activities. This one is interesting. It is one of our more proportional outcomes that I report to the Board. We generally see all of our reference groups fairly well represented, so we want that rising tide of solid boats. So we'll continue to work to engage students in school, and co-curriculars are a way to do that. Another aspect of individual and team skills is our academic and career planning. ACP is the abbreviation you might see. So there are activities that begin in sixth grade, well, actually, they begin in elementary, but we would start recording them in sixth grade, and now through 12th grade. Generally, they happen at advisory time, homeroom time. Zelo is like a web-based program where students do career exploration, works through councils. We have meetings with counselors where they talk about that question, what do you want to be when you grow up? What's it going to take to get there? What are the courses that you need? What are some supports that can be provided? So that's the ACP. Our goal is to have 100% of our students engaged in all of these activities. For those newer to the Board, we made great strides in this last year with this. We had sporadic participation. We didn't even have grade level activities aligned. So last year, we were able to have grade level activities aligned and pretty strong participation. So we'll continue to do work to improve that. And the third one, this is one that will be related to the secondary standards-based report card. There are habits of mind. So those statements, we're working with teachers to decide how to separate behavior from learning. And one of those indicators will be reported on for the Board related to team and individual. One of my goals, or one of the goals for the results policies, in my opinion, is to hear from all of our different content areas. So over the course of the next several weeks, I have meetings with every content area coordinator. We're talking about ways to bring in different content areas to shine a light on them with the Board. I believe FIED will have a nice match here coming forward. And I have a couple other suggestions that, as I go through the different results policies, to bring in different content areas so we can have more of a 360 look at what happens in the School District of La Crosse results-wise. Another indicator you've seen before, youth apprenticeship participation. So that's on the rise. We are continuing to work on that. What jumps out, obviously, is the disproportionality of that. And so one of the things that data does is it tells a story and makes people aware of that. Without maybe collecting the data in this way, we might not have seen it as well, as this clearly points out that it's an opportunity for improvement. Those are the Results Policy 3.2.
Any questions for Dr. Lahaki?
I have one. I don't, this is just something I've been thinking about with regards to the long-range facility plan and the impact it might have on co-curricular activities. Have we ever considered adding as a reference group proximity to school that students live? And how that impacts the amount of co-curricular activities they participate in?
I haven't, right? Like, that would be interesting to know, yes? Like, as far as transportation, like, who is able to have their own transportation? What does that look like? How does it impact it? I don't have that data off the top of my head.
Just curious.
Yeah, I could see using, there must be some data that we have that indicates whether they're in a walk zone or not, and then you could, or if they're eligible for busing, cut the data that way as well.
I would say if you did that, you're going to have to be very nuanced in how you think about measuring that, because also I think whether or not they have access to busing is a key piece, but obviously, there are differences in access to that transportation, and you wouldn't want that to be misleading.
Yeah. That's an indicator, the co-curricular one, that's commonly used throughout the state. That's a good one that perhaps I can reach out to see if anybody's done that work and how they've addressed some of those nuances. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, continue, Dr. Lahaki.
Results Policy 3.3, if only I went this fast all year, right? So Results Policy 3.3 is a communication, demonstrate effective communication skills. The first one, well, it was pretty incomplete because we used the Wisconsin Forward Writing Assessment, and that was not offered the last two years. So you do see some gaps in our data. The plan is, though, this spring to have the writing component back. So you will get data next year, but there'll just be that little bit of a gap in the middle. We did have ACT writing data that was presented before, and you can see what that score looks like for grade 11. I don't know if I've mentioned this or not. So the ACT Aspire is part of the Wisconsin Student Assessment System. It's going away. In this year, we'll have a different ninth and 10th grade test. It's the pre-ACT. And the reason that I mention it here is because the pre-ACT flows into the ACT. It uses the college and career-ready standards, and I think gives us an opportunity to have more data points to help students recognize and staff recognize what it takes, or what are some opportunities for students to fill in gaps so they're ready for the ACT when they take it in 11th grade. So more of alignment, the ACT Aspire wasn't as aligned. And the last indicator is the school report card. This one, we went to the elementary. They've been doing standard-based grading for, oh, gosh, over a decade now. So we have some pretty good data to pull from grades one through five as far as communication on their report card, and that data's been reported for the second quarter is when that data's pulled. Do you have any questions about Results Policy 3.3? That's one I think our visual arts or performing arts may have some space, and so working with them on what are some things we can bring to you to shine a light on our visual and performing arts. and performing arts. And the fourth one is world language proficiency. So we had taken a bit... We hadn't done the end-of-the-year assessment for the last two years, but we will go back to that practice starting this year. So once again, this is an area where you see a bit of a gap, but we'll plan to fill that gap going forward with data. This is done at the end of a year, so this would definitely have to fall into one of our summer reports for timeliness of data.
Any questions for our 3.3?
I'd just like to understand why that's marked. In looking at the report, I can see where there... It hasn't been measured the last couple of years. So it's marked in compliance here, that's what you're suggesting, so I'm going to guess that there's going to be some kind of exception noted with that.
Yes. The... So we had marked...
The world language proficiency piece? Since there's no... You mentioned there's no...
It's above on the page preceding that, so it's a one where the block got cut off.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Results Policy 3.4, practice good stewardship towards the environment. This is our last board report, last time together in October. We had two indicators for that one. One was citizen science, and the other one was an environmental action log. Although this isn't the time to share the changes, here's what I anticipate presenting is that we'll merge those two together. It's hard to predict citizen science, because a researcher doesn't always want to work with an entire grade-level population, for example, and also, their amount of time that they want to work is their choice as well. So trying to build citizen science projects as part of our general curriculum is just... It's going to be a challenge, because the researchers and what they would want to get out of their research is totally out of our control. However, it's still a good measure to aspire to, so I anticipate the environmental action logs to somehow designate specifically when we were able to collaborate with external researchers. So combine those two, still looking for another opportunity to practice the good stewardship and be able to provide you some data there. So I hope to have something meaty for you to discuss and think about in November.
Any questions about that? Okay, move ahead, Dr. Lahackey.
Results Policy 3.5, recognize the impact of social location or positionality on how individuals see, understand, and experience the world around them, race, ethnicity, gender identity, gender expression, sexuality, social class, disability status. So for 3.5, our approach was to work with our ELA and social studies teachers and find what is a way that we can connect what we're doing in our curriculum to one of our assessments. And in ELA, we were successful with that, not across the board yet, so that's still our challenge and opportunity, is to make sure that this is standardized, so every student takes this particular assessment, and we have more complete data to report. For social studies, what we're looking is that same kind of opportunity. In 7th and 10th grade, we do work with... That's where we teach about the Holocaust, and over the years, there's been essay contests and opportunities for students to participate in an essay contest or some sort of representation of learning. I think there's a nice synergy there between being able to use our Holocaust education that we already have in the curriculum and fulfill what we're trying to do with the board, and it meets one of our standards. So we're just trying to put the finishing touches and work with the different teachers to figure out exactly what that looks like. But I anticipate 7th and 10th grade will have some data for you for Results Policy 3.5. So our plan's coming a little bit further along, and we anticipate having data for you when we report in the spring. I think it's April is 3.5.
Any questions on 3.5? Okay, then, on to the final one.
The last results policy, demonstrate awareness of the ways historical and current systems of oppression work together to produce injustice and identify strategies for addressing these systems of oppression, racism, sexism, homophobia, transphobia, and ableism. Same approach, same thing. So I anticipate our ELA, once again, we've already identified a writing prompt, that'll be the data that goes for Results Policy 3.6 and for the Holocaust work. So I anticipate 10th grade might be 3.5, and then 3.6 might be 7th grade or reverse. So we just have to figure out what's the best fit for where it happens in the curriculum organically, rather than a one-off assignment. So those are the details we need to work through, but once again, I anticipate having data, full data for you for 3.6 this spring in May.
Any questions on 3.6?
I have a question about the entire document. As we process through, knowing that there are certain data that is not available to us yet, both from looking back at the 2021 school year data, points that were mentioned above, and then also thinking about this, I guess I'm curious, I know that we're going towards something, right? But as a board, I guess my question is, do we still mark it as reasonable or not? Like, I know we're going towards something, but it's not showing the results yet.
I think that's the struggle the board has had as they, as you all come to grips with, you know, coherent governance and what this monitoring means, and as it's been in development over the last two-plus years, you know, what is reasonable progress on some of these things that are harder to capture, or where we've had a pandemic that has interfered with the ability to even gather data in the first place? And so, I don't have an answer to that, but I think...
I think one of the things that I really appreciate as we transition from policy governance to coherent governance, and policy governance for new board members has been in place for many, many years in the district, is that the new reports allow us to note exceptions where needed and to be a little more clear about that. I think that it can also be a challenge when, I think about 3.5 and 3.6, I'm actually encouraged each time it comes forward. I think we're a little bit further along. Some pieces of it, just by nature of the data we're trying to collect, can take a little bit longer. And so, to Mr. Spivey's concern, I hear that and appreciate that, and I think that, you know, you've got a transition to a new monitoring process, while very similar to the old, has some important distinctions coupled with a pandemic, which also adds this huge wrinkle to that as well. And so, I think that, as a board member, I've had a little more grace about that as we kind of work through that. But as the board continues on, I think board members will need to continue to ask those questions and really flesh out, what does that reasonable piece mean?
And similarly, as I think about 3.3 and 3.2, whichever one's using the state test scores, I think I'm right. We talk about the goal of it being greater than the state average, and we're like, right there, below, but close. So that would be another one I would question. Should we continue to say reasonable or not?
And I think in the case for those, from our perspective of administration, we've made reasonable progress towards that goal. So our goal is to be in excess of the state average, and so, as you look at the gap, it's narrowing over time, and so, in our estimation, that is reasonable progress, especially given everything else. Once we have hit that mark of above state average, we're going to have to reassess what that goal looks like, and is it, you know, to maintain that? Is it to see improvement over the prior year relative to the state? You know, so there's, I think, some nuance as we move forward, but the way that we looked at it was, are we getting closer to that goal? Yes, we think that's reasonable progress towards that goal. We haven't made it yet, as you rightly point out, but we're shooting for something.
I think that's why metrics in general reflect, like, values, because we could, or the administration could submit to the board simply just a change in those measures, and we would be exceeding it. I mean, there is like, there is some subjectivity to that, so it's really a reflection of values. And I would just, I think that's something the board should keep in mind, because I do appreciate that you're setting those goals higher, and that that's something that we're working towards, but the measurement of the growth piece, as opposed to just these metrics that have just been selected and are relative, is, I think that's just an important piece to think about, because that could be changed, and we'd be exceeding it right now. I appreciate the higher expectation.
Any other discussion? Looks like we're kind of looking at which, what we will kind of lean towards for the motion options when this comes forward at the next meeting. Hearing somewhat, one, that was what we're kind of looking for, I think.
I guess I have a question, and I don't... I first want to say, like, I recognize, like, all the work that teachers have put into adapting these curriculums and the assessments, so 3.5 and 3.6 in particular. All of them are essays, and I'm curious, as like, as they're talking about, and maybe I'm like, because I obviously am new, so maybe I'm pushing ahead a little bit too much, but would there be encouragement or space or payment for teachers to have the freedom to look beyond kind of the system itself? Like, it's kind of like talking about oppression within a system of oppression. Does that make sense?
I'm glad you brought that up. So we work with the foundation that provides the award, and it was always an essay opportunity. So we said, what about other ways to represent learning? Websites, podcasts, audio, art? Well, how can you demonstrate your learning? And they said they would be open to that, so that was one of the things I want to work with teachers on, is to figure out exactly what that looks like and be able to provide the rubrics. In a former life, I used to do National History Day, so I do have rubrics from all different kinds of product submissions that we could pull from, to be able to show learning and represent learning in different ways, so it doesn't have to be an essay. I believe the ELA one, though, there was a recommendation to keep with an essay format, because it replaces a writing prompt that they already had. So there was a fit in the curriculum. We just changed the topic for them. For the social studies, though, that is a discussion point for us right now.
Because it's focused on a particular curriculum that, like, that has already been picked? Like, this question kind of is the one that has to be integrated into a particular curriculum?
No, 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 no. And so, for the essay, it changed questions, prompts every year for the Shoah group. So we're recommending, maybe we don't change that question every year, but every couple years, just to provide some consistency to it and build it within our curriculum. The ELA essay is one, we found some texts that we had vetted, and it's a writing... Students read it, and then they write about it, so we built it in.
Who's the group of people that's looking at these questions and items?
For which one?
For developing 3.5 and 3.6, like, the English and the social studies?
Sure, the teachers involved.
Okay.
And then, if it does go to, for the Shoah group, because there's scholarship available for that, what we'll ask teachers to do is maybe identify a few of the samples they thought were very strong, and ask students if they would be interested in having a submission for that, because the Shoah group doesn't want to read, you know, 400 or have 400 products to evaluate, so we'll ask our teachers to narrow that down a little bit.
Okay, any other discussion? Then I think we can move on to 7.02, which is the Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE7.
Yes, so Operational Expectation Monitoring is a part of our process for coherent governance, where, and this is less like R3, which is distributed over time, and kind of a single snapshot, looking backwards over the last year or the last school year, and this falls within Ms. Spring's area of expertise, so I will turn it over to her.
Sure. OE7 is all about asset protection. It's pretty much being in compliance, making sure that our assets are covered, and so, a lot of these pieces of evidence are actual insurance policies to cover that. So I'm not going to go through each one of them, but please stop me if you have questions, because this is for the 21, 22 school year, so these are in an annual, and we go back. But the district purchases and receives coverage for property, so we would have a property insurance. That's what I would not go into for each one of these, assuming that you did see them all attached. But I will go down to, let's see. So it goes through OE7.2, indicator four is still insurance coverage. So is 7.3, indicator one is our crime insurance coverage. And then the others are, if there was no known unprotected loss, there's just a statement that there was no unprotected loss. And so you'll see a lot of that, unprotected loss, going through all of them. We even have a cyber enhancement endorsement, of course, because cyber activity is a threat to the district. And 7.5, that improper use of district funds. So if you go to 7.5, indicator two, this is something that's on an annual basis. We do have a work... What do we call those? Work order requests. And so we have software that keeps track of those and how many days it takes on average to complete those. The completion within the school year, we tried to reach the 95 percentile, as you can see, in the past year, it was 96.3%. Some projects extend past the year. So then there are snow and incident reports. You'll see there, they're very... And the corrective action for those incidents. The capital maintenance and improvement plan document is on there, as Mr. Levina always comes to the board and presents that each year. That one was for the previous year, 21, 22. So 7.6, the district appropriately uses legal counsel to protect the district against potentially the titigus... Did I pronounce that right? Probably not. So, but any kind of legal action against the district that we would need legal counsel for. So evidence for, evidence two, that there were no lawsuits against the district determined in a court of law, that would show us as legally responsible. And then, of course, we have our compliance, the state Wisconsin statutes in regards to investments. We have brought to you before the depository designations and the notes to the basic financial statement, which our auditor presents to you every year. And then, no real estate was purchased, encumbered, or disposed of without the board approval. So in the last year, we did sell off a portion of land to the Department of Transportation right over by Southern Bluff, so that they could continue with their roundabout work, but that was all we did last year, and that is documented there as of July of 2021. And then, there is no finding by the independent external auditors in reference to disposition and acquisition of land and buildings, and that shows our annual report has that information from last year. You'll get the new information once the auditor comes with the report for 21, 22. And then, a... And then, of course, a statement that there's no litigation regarding careless and reckless acts by the superintendent. Any questions?
My question for the first one. The one that covers Board members, and there's a deductible.
We would pay the deductible if we had an occurrence, yes.
The school district's responsible.
Yeah.
But isn't there an exception for conflict of interest?
If there was a known conflict of interest, then it would probably create its own separate legal issue.
My understanding from legal, from Shayna, is that with the exception that there is a conflict of interest, which that would change?
Actual.
Actual.
Okay. So, and then the Board member would be responsible for that? But I doubt that would be an issue for you, Ms. Burkettall.
Any other questions for Ms. Spring? I'm guessing this one will be in the compliance for the next one, or anyone else see anything differently, or? Okay, we will move on to the Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE11 Instructional Program.
All right, so this is Dr. Harsy, and this includes proposed changes. So it was approved on the consent agenda, but this month, we also bring back any proposed changes to clarify anything that I think might need it. So, Dr. Harsy?
Yeah, I just have a few recommendations for the Board's consideration, and then, I don't know if Board members, if you have some as well, but I'll start with 11.3. So indicator one, 11.3, you heard over the last couple of times in presenting this report that we've changed the name of the Curriculum Review Team to the Teaching and Learning Committee, so both in 11.3 and 11.7, we wanted to just simply update that name. So you'd see those two recommendations for future iterations. And then in 11.4, where we suggest changing, basically that entire indicator two, we've talked about the federal report card, the federal assessment previously, and to say that we use it to identify universal curriculum improvement really is kind of narrowly defined. So we suggest utilize the, the language, utilize federal assessment, tracking of student progress to identify areas of growth. We use it for a variety of other practical applications, including disproportionality in special education areas, et cetera, and so that language is just much more accurate in its actual utilization, so that would be what we'd suggest there. Scrolling further down, looking at, let's see what the next one is, okay, yep, 11.7 would be the next area. Again, that's just the District Curriculum Team in favor of the updated Teaching and Learning Committee. And then, and here's where, I'm not sure I heard correctly or not, but in 11.8, in indicators three, four, and five, I thought I may have heard, I could be wrong, about going and doing a little bit of research or homework with other coherent governance districts around that language that we've been using, our current language, each elementary school, and we could say middle or high school, depending on which indicator we're in, but each of the school will be in the category of meet state's expectation using the criteria, et cetera, et cetera. So I did, I went and checked with other coherence governance districts. So I checked with Chippewa Falls, DeForest, Shorewood, and Sun Prairie. And Chippewa Falls, Shorewood, and Sun Prairie, they don't use the language that we're currently using. For example, Shorewood's, you know, talks about the data presentation included, school and district report cards was completed, so they expect a data presentation, but they do talk about their more in-depth data is used in their results policies. Chippewa Falls talks about the district reviews and analysis of academic achievement results from the district and state assessments, including trends over time to determine the effectiveness of the academic resources and interventions that are being purchased. Again, they don't quite use the report cards like we do. Sun Prairie appears for OE11 anywhere, not using the state report cards, they're using their in-district assessments. They were using, at the time I reviewed this, STAR and Progress Monitoring and AmesWeb. DeForest, however, is using their elementary, middle, and high schools will exceed state expectations, so in comparison. And so, having said all that, what we suggested was, all of the same criteria that we used last time, and then we throw in this "or" caveat, will show reasonable growth or achievement. And the logic behind that language would then challenge administration to explain to the Board the reason behind, for example, as we had the brief elevator conversation last time about having an elementary school, for example, the way their score was rated or weighted, that was achieving above the state average, well above the state average, but that's not how their report card was weighted, and therefore met few expectations. And then the Board would have to chew on and make that decision like you were tonight, is that reasonable progress or isn't it? So that's just consideration for the Board, if you want to add that language, or, or not, or go by way of DeForest, or go by way of a Shorewood, or some other district. So that's just one of the suggestions for the report card language. Further down, I think there's maybe just one more recommendation, and that is in 11.11, indicator two, and this one is really clarifying language again. The way indicator, the indicator two currently reads, it's as if we're monitoring the substitutes. Suggested language just, I think, cleans up that language a little bit. We're monitoring the utilization of the substitutes to make sure it's the, in achieving stated goals that we have in the district. And I think those are just the, I think that's it for proposed changes from administration's perspective.
Okay, any questions or discussions?
Is it possible, Dr. Harsy, for you to send us kind of your, your research on 11.8, indicator three?
Yeah.
Just kind of some of the verbiage that's used in the other districts, so that we can kind of take some time to reflect, and maybe when we come back to...
Yeah, let me, let me clean it up, because it's just, I just cut and pasted, and it's all chicken scratches, but I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't have any problem with the suggested changes. I think that this, adding this piece about showing reasonable growth or achievement gets at some of the challenges that we've had in the past with the way some of that has been weighted. I think it will be helpful to review what other coherent governance districts do, but in general, I appreciate that change.
I would agree, even though it's sometimes a struggle to just, to figure out what reasonable is, but we get with that, and there we can look at some of the details that may not be, you know, coming to the top or helping a school in that situation, so.
If this is language that the Board ultimately ends up supporting, it may be language you might see in Results Policy language at some point, it just may offer up a more precise conversation around some of the data.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
Did both the district curriculum team and the curriculum review team become Teaching and Learning Committee?
Yeah.
They were two different groups that joined together?
We used this, we should have been clear, it was the same group.
Okay, all the same group, but now Teaching and Learning Committee, okay.
So it sounds like it's cleaning up a little language, probably.
Yep.
Okay. We can move on to announcements by Superintendent Engel.
So just three small things. First, National School Lunch Week is next week, so that's exciting to celebrate our lunch program. We have an amazing school nutrition program, and excited to celebrate that. Second, we have two informational sessions for the referendum this week, Wednesday virtually and Thursday in person at Lincoln from six to eight, or 6:30 to 8:30. And then, lastly, the Governor had a proclamation for Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week, and I won't read the whole proclamation, although I want to, and just want to say aye, and I know our community appreciates the difficult, challenging work that you take on on behalf of our students, and it is often work that goes unnoticed, but it makes a huge difference in our community, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Engel. Next on, we look for Agenda Planning.
I make a motion to approve the October 17, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second.
A motion has been made by Dr. Cooper Stoll and seconded by Mr. Spivey to approve the October 17, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a no. The motion carries. Any Board debriefing tonight?
Thank you for leading the meeting, Mr. Corbergh.
You're welcome. Not, we will adjourn, thank you.
Katie, I've got something for you, too.